Shall we rise for the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
President Daley?
Here.
Vice President Hammond?
Here.
Trustee Clements?
Trustee.
There. Trustee Schwartz?
Here.
And trustee Cory Zappson.
Very good. So, we're going to get right to it today. The first thing I want to address is the... So, last meeting, we talked a lot about concussions. And I'm proud that I think the athletic director and the administration and the board, we've all are moving in the right direction. We were putting a policy in place. We are going above and beyond with the state mandates. And we're also bringing an athletic trainer into the mix. So, I think we're doing really good stuff. I think we've made really good decisions about it. But since our meeting and now, there have been a couple of inquiries from people saying, "Wait a second, I thought we already had a concussion policy in place. What do you mean?" So, we've been addressing those questions for the past couple of weeks. So, I thought we would take the opportunity to address it publicly. And Dr. Bowers can jump in with any additional information. But from what I understand, there was a protocol for concussions. It wasn't an official school policy. And when things are not official school policies, they can get lost a bit in transition. So, there was concussion testing happening through 2013. But from 2013 till now, it wasn't happening. And during that timeframe, we had two different school nurses. We had a different athletic director. We had a different superintendent. And so, there were a lot of people in coming and going in the mix that tend to keep concussion policies moving along. And without a policy officially in place, I think it went by the wayside. So, that came to our attention. And as soon as it came to our attention, it came to Dr. Bowers' attention and Chris Solomon's attention. I think everybody moved as quickly as possible to fix it and to get a concussion policy in place. So, that's the story. Am I missing anything?
No, I think that's it. And at this point, we are interviewing for athletic trainers. There are two people that Chris thought very highly of. And I think I'm meeting with one of them tomorrow. And so, I would anticipate that we're going to have somebody onboard quickly. And one of the benefits of having an athletic trainer is during the down seasons in between the fall and winter and then the winter and spring sports, the athletic trainer can actually help create the baseline. So, we have them going on a regular basis. And so, we should have... We will be getting baseline measurements for our winter season and our spring season this year.
Are athletic directors, athletic trainers, are they generally something else? You know, because of the hours and the salary is not... You know, are they...
Physical therapists or something?
Yeah. I would anticipate that they would have some other things in their lives. But I don't... I'm not sure. And I think that's probably depending on who you're going to get. But they are usually afternoon. It's usually four hours a day and something along those lines. So, yeah, I would think that there's probably something else going on in their lives.
Okay. Great.
Great. So, that's that. And I'm assuming we'll get an update. We'll obviously be approving the hiring of the athletic director or the athletic trainer whenever that's ready to go. And I hope that Chris will give us an update on how it's all working out when winter sports get in.
What would be the... I don't want to say... Like, how would the hiring go of a position like that as far as the flexibility of like a probationary period? And what are the details about that?
Well, it's a little bit different because it's not found within the contracts. So, it's a certified position that would be... It's part-time. So, it would be like any other part-time position that on an annual basis, they're approved.
Okay.
So, it's a little bit different.
Okay. And so, then the other item that I wanted to just... To get us rolling with is the public hearing for some buildings and grounds issues. So, we put out our public hearing notice with appropriate time. And here we are. And it's to discuss the emergency exit windows that need some emergency repairs. So, I'm going to hold offering up public comment maybe until we hear from everybody, Ann and Dr. Bowers and Laura, who's on the Buildings and Grounds Committee. Basically, we need to decide if we want to take a vote to release some funds from the repair reserve so we can immediately address these windows. Or if we don't want to do that immediately, if we want to hold it for another reason or talk about different funding. So, I'll turn it over to you guys.
Okay. Well, I'll start by saying, if you've been listening for the last couple of months, Michael Twarty has given us kind of an understanding of what repairs have been done district-wide last year and what we anticipate doing throughout this year. And as you know, many of the school districts have put on hold some of the repairs that they probably would have made if the finances were a little bit different throughout New York State. But there have been a couple of things that have been held over. And so, now, we're trying to really address those and to catch up and hopefully get to the point that we've met all the requirements of the repair needs of the district. So, we've been talking about the stage-two repairs. And some of the things that we've been really focusing on for the actual needs and in some cases, health and safety-related issues, are the windows in the elementary wing, both the girls' and the boys' bathroom in the same area, and our bleachers in the large gym. And we have a situation that the windows that were placed in the elementary wing are different than those placed in the different parts of the building. And one of the windows that is causing some concern is the fire escape window. And the hardware, because the windows are one-piece and they're very large, the hardware that is on them in a couple of cases, because the wind has caught the windows and pulled it out, is bending and they're becoming problematic. And we have to, at the minimum, immediately change the hardware. Some has already been changed. Others are on order. And so, the immediate concern will, at this point, be dissipated for now. But we also have to look at the safety and the potential safety of the windows in the next couple of years to decide if we should be replacing those. Michael Twarty got an estimate of about $18,000 to replace all the fire escape windows throughout that wing. And the other discussion that we had at length the other day was looking at those windows. There's a sill on the bottom of the entire group of windows that is beginning to tilt in. And what's happening is there's water that's now able to get in. Because of the tilt of the bottom, the water can get in behind the facade. And that's causing some concern because we don't want any problems to occur. So, the conversation has been, do we just replace the hardware? Do we replace the windows, the fire escape windows in all classrooms? Or do we replace all the windows and all the sills in the elementary wing? And there's pros and cons to each. We estimated that if we were to replace all the windows, it would have a ticket price of about $200,000. And that would also deal with the issue with the sills and also the issue with the potential leakage of water behind the facade. And so, that's one of the things we were talking about. The other is that we have some bathrooms that are antiquated. There have been a couple of changes made in the girls' room upstairs. But there is a need, for many different reasons, to look at the potential of really kind of gutting those bathrooms and redoing them. And the bleachers, we know that we need some repairs, immediate repairs on those. And it's estimated that the repairs will be about $30,000 to repair it or $70,000 to buy new bleachers. So, that's the discussion. So, Ann, anything you want to add to that?
The only other thing that I wanted to say was that the hope was that if we replace the hardware, we would also put a chain to prevent the windows from swinging open too far. It would buy us time to investigate really what's happening with the water that's coming in and how much damage it's really causing. And I guess the point was, is that before we go ahead and replace these emergency windows, let's do further investigation to see what's really going on. And by replacing that window, is it going to solve the problem with the rest of the windows? You know, the water? Probably not. So, we thought by going this route, it would hopefully cost less than what we originally anticipated in replacing the full windows. And also, we could have discussion... There was discussion that there wasn't much ventilation with the current windows in the classrooms. So, that was another thing that we discussed and we're hoping to look further into.
So, is the $18,000 that we're talking about for those windows... The hardware's already been fixed. So, is this the chains?
On some of the windows, it's been fixed.
On the ones that we have concerns about.
Okay. So, the $18,000 then encompasses what?
Taking all the emergency windows out and replacing them with new windows.
New windows, new sills, new hardware, the whole shebang.
So, that's option one.
Just new windows.
No, it's not new sills. Well, you'd have to look at what was happening with the sills. And the sills are under all of the windows as they go through.
So, there was a couple of options discussed. The first option would be to basically take all the emergency exit windows, remove them, replace them with casement double-hung windows. And that was estimated at $18,000. After much discussion and advice from both the architects on the committee, they said that might not be the right way to go because we haven't really investigated the water coming in and the additional damage that's being caused behind the walls. So, great, we'll replace those windows. But we may not really solve any other problem. We'll solve the problem with those emergency exit windows, but maybe nothing else. So, the cost initially was $18,000 for the replacement of those windows. And there was an estimate of $15,000 to try and reset the sills underneath. So, upon the architects' meeting of the minds, we had probably a two-and-a-half-hour discussion, I think, at length about this. And the conclusion was, perhaps, to buy some time, we should change the hinges on these emergency windows so that it can sustain the weight. We should add chains at the tops of the windows to, like a suspension chain, so that if the window was to swing open, it doesn't hit the existing bricks. And there seemed to be some thought that the window sills, once a schematic design was... Would be drawn up, that it would be significantly less to fix than originally anticipated. That's what I was gathering.
So, the hardware and the chains, the Band-Aid to keep it safe for right now option, that some of that's been done?
Yes.
Three windows, I believe?
Well, we only... They only had the hardware for one.
Okay.
The hardware for the other two was on order. But the one that was... Had the greatest concern, that's been changed. And probably within the next week or so, all three will have been changed.
So, the hardware's been changed. We had the money to do that.
Yep. It was relatively minimal.
And the chains?
Will also apparently be relatively minimal.
Relatively inexpensive. And it's... They were explaining, and you may understand this better than I do, but it's like a screen door, the chain on a screen door. So, if the wind catches it, it doesn't flap open and break. So, it's something very similar to that.
So, the keep-it-safe-for-right-now fixes are something that we can do within our current budget and not something we need to release funds for from the repair resource?
Correct. And then, the other discussion was, if we do this and we give ourselves some time, we can really make an informed decision about the best steps. I mean, should we be looking at pulling money from the repair reserves, the capital reserves? Or should we be looking at all the immediate needs and potentially discussing a small referendum?
Ann, just so you know, the windows are about 38 years old. So, that was the other concern is that although on the facade, they look sturdy and strong. And but there's the efficiency, the ventilation, the water leaking through. These are all things that, after our discussion, we said, "Well, it would be crazy probably to just replace the emergency exit window without looking further into and investigating."
So, do we feel like the... Because we were talking about the bleachers, the elementary school bathrooms. Do we feel like the window, the big window project, could all of that be like done over the summer? Is that something we can wait until the summer to do and throughout the year, figure out how to pay for it? Or is that too late?
It depends. If we're going to do it through a bond referendum, then you need to apply to the state. And information has to be sent up and the state education department will approve it. And that... You're at the mercy of the state ed department for that. And right now, they're working on kind of a skeleton crew, from what we're hearing. So, if it's something that's... Is it under $100,000? You don't need to go through that process with state ed?
We need to go through it, but it would be accelerated.
Ex... Okay.
If it was the under $100,000 project, we'd still have to go through similar procedures to get it approved. But they expedite those requests. Really, in looking at what we're facing on these three big items, I don't know that it would fit into the $100,000 project. But I know that we have had a discussion about looking at some retiring debt. And within the next couple of years, we have to bond the turf field ban that we've been carrying because we're in the third year now. So, maybe because the rates are still low, our bond rating is good, we can get some good rates on maybe bundling a bond together to take care of all of that. So, yeah, the... What started out as we're going to replace these windows, as, you know, we had more discussion with the experts and the architects, it really, more things got on the table. And, you know, every time something's on the table, it comes with a price tag. So, it did. And if we're already at $70,000 for bleachers, window replacement in our bathroom kind of knocks us out of that $100,000 project. Maybe we can look at that for the future. But right now, bundling those things together, it still would be a small referendum as compared to, you know, millions of dollars that we've been through before.
And/or we can do it in two different stages. We can do one using reserve funds and/or capital funds.
Right. There's the repair money and...
And then you can do another for the other, the referendum.
Some of the items on the list are... Is repair that you could use. That's what we're having the discussion tonight. You know, for the public hearing to release the funds. But if you're going to take from the capital fund, that's a referendum. We already have some money saved for that. So, that's a plus.
But if we were to wait until May for the regular voting time, where we would typically put in a referendum, we would have to wait to get the voter approval to use the money, I'm assuming, before we then apply to state ed to say, "Hey, now, we've got voter approval.
Right.
Now, we want to do this project." So, that could push us till summer of 2018, if we felt like we need to do it over the summer. Or it could push us beyond and beyond.
Right.
Right. For something like the bathrooms and the... An entire window project, you know, replacing the cells.
That's not Christmas vacation. That is summer.
That's not Christmas vacation. That's summer. And those are where specs would have to be drawn up, plans approved by the state, bids sent out. So, that all takes time.
So, realistically, if we wanted to do these projects this coming summer, the only way to actually make that happen timeline-wise would be to like have a vote, a separate vote, and to get moving on it ASAP?
I don't even know if we'd be able to do it then.
And even then, we're not even sure.
Right.
Okay.
And I think, just to be at ease, once... That was the point, to buy us time. With these fixes, it's going to make the windows safer. And it allows us to further investigate the real situation. Because in the long run, if water... The discussion was, if water's getting through these windows, it's going to be causing more damage than we're anticipating and costs a lot more than just replacing the windows. So, that's...
But the bleacher thing is something that we want to do as soon as possible and would not require state approval. Because there's no plans involved. It's just buying...
I'm not sure what it... We'd still have to sentence specifications up.
Right. If you... If we want to get state aid on it, which is 30% of... 34% is our rate.
And we could also say it's kind of an emergency repair because we've had some concerns that have been shared with us by the insurance company. So, we could put that in kind of the fast track if we did that individually. And I think that that would be something that we could get through relatively quickly if we chose to go that direction.
Because there's no real blueprints or plans that would have to be approved, that would, as a separate item, would go quicker than having specs drawn up for that.
But would we lose any benefit because we're not coupling it with the other two items in terms of like financial?
It's the same percentage we get for building aid.
Yeah. And you have the funds put aside from the year-end, from fund balance. The reserves were funded. You could say you just want to use those funds to pay for the bleachers and have that separated from the window project. Another option talked about, about the windows, was to fix the emergency windows, the hinges and the straps, and then address the sills with that part of the project so that that's going to stop any further water infiltration and damage that's going to happen from that. And then, look at the full replacements of both the regular windows and the emergency windows in that window replacement project. But the sills will be taken off of that, you know? And that kind of lets it not be such an emergency because then the water isn't going into the wall anymore.
They have to figure out a design, a schematic drawing for that.
And that piece of it would not be a budgeted item. That you would have to talk about releasing the repair funds for that.
So, um... How's the board feeling? Is there any direction? Do we... It's sounding to me like...
Is there any conversation of, like you said, you're saying the referendum, referendum, it'd be a small one. Is there any conversation about, like, just taking all the... Instead of doing this piecemeal every year and just... What about doing a bigger refer... And just throw everything, a giant referendum and just clear out the whole bucket?
Well, one of the things that we have on it's for my first superintendent's report item is to talk about that in December. And what we have as potential conversations is, do we do a small referendum? Do we do a large referendum? Or should we be rolling a smaller referendum into a large referendum to meet all the plans? And then, also, look at the strategic plan and any of the suggestions through that. And then, we talked... I have here coupling the turf field, bond anticipation notes, the bands, with a smaller referendum now. So, all of that is something... And what is our retiring debt? So, I think that all of that kind of has to play into it. And Ann can let us know where the debt is and where we're in bands and where we're in bonds and what will be retired when. And then, that can help us make a decision about small referendum, large referendum, or the reserves.
Right. Are we talking about that when?
December, the first... A month from now.
So, Ann, the hinges and the chains can be taken care of without releasing from the reserves, right?
I think that we would be okay in taking care of those. It did not appear, and I don't have an exact count, but it did not appear that every window needed to have the hinges replaced. It was also... We weren't encouraged to just go ahead and replace all the hinges if they didn't need to be replaced because that would weaken the window because they're piano hinges rather than the internal ones that are on there now. So, really, a full inspection has to be done of every single window to decide what needs to be done. But it was not everyone had to be replaced. And then, it was also within what the budget could handle for those straps. I am not confident that it's within the budget to address all the sills at this time unless some repair money is released.
If we went with a large referendum, would the timeline still work out that it could be done during this coming... Could it... It wouldn't be this summer, it would be the following summer?
We hope. Yeah.
Because we can't start the process of plans and getting bids until we get the approval to do it.
Right. Okay. Okay. I see what you're saying.
And it also depends on how... What the backlog is at state ed and how many people are there. And so, you know, I've been in situations before where we anticipated starting construction one summer and it got pushed ahead to the next.
Because I would think, one thing, if we did a large referendum, if there's maybe try to throw in... And I'm not going to attempt to even throw out an example of... Because I don't want to start... Like, something that would be something a little appealing to people, like something, you know, in addition to a building. You know, something, you know, that would make it, you know, not just about, you know, window sills.
And I think we would probably... That's a little sexy, is what you're saying.
Yeah.
Yeah. And we want to have... We want to invite the public in and talk about what they would like to see and do some kind of a focus group and then make decisions through that.
Okay.
But are we feeling like we want to talk about releasing money from the repair reserves to get these bleachers taken care of?
So, yes. So, that's actually... I actually kind of think that we do want to do that because, well... Well, I know we're going to talk about, you know, some of these other things and sort of how to deal with them at this next meeting. You know, this is something that has been raised. It's something we've been talking about. And, I mean, we all saw the bleachers when we did our review of the, you know, the physical structures at the beginning of the year. And, you know, it certainly seems like they need to be replaced, you know? There's no doubt about it.
Yeah. I feel like everybody's kind of in agreement on that. I don't think there's any question, right? The board knows that they need to be replaced. The facilities people know that they need to be replaced. We have set aside the money so that they can be replaced. I'm wondering if we should just get them replaced?
Oh, and that's what I was trying to say. Yes. I think we should go ahead and get them replaced.
Yeah. Yeah. No, I... That was clear.
Like, replacing as opposed to fixing?
Fixing.
Yeah.
And taking the money from the repair reserves to do that?
I think that would be capital if we're getting new ones.
Sorry, sorry. Replacing, right. The capital.
Mm-hmm. And that would require a vote from the community.
So, we'd have to do that before... We wouldn't wait till the May election for that? We'd do that before?
We could make that choice of doing it whenever we wanted to.
May, would it be nice to have them? Do we feel like we could have them in for the winter sports? No way?
I'm not sure we can get that...
I know wheels turn slowly, but...
Have you designed the...
Yeah. And the lead time was...
Okay. Okay.
But if we wait till May, would we have them for the start of the new school year?
Doubtful, too.
So, we need to do it before...
That, I think, would be more reasonable, though, because if we're May to September, I think... I think that was within the lead time that Mike had quoted. But I'm not remembering exactly, so I don't want to say. But I think it was... But I think it was more feasible.
So then it sounds like we're not, it wouldn't behoove us to pull it out. We should keep it amongst the grouping.
What could we do, what would entail doing an election in like, sometime in the wind, like a January, February election? Is that a big expense?
Well, it's another referendum because it's, the voters would have to come out and vote, and we would have to make sure that we get all the information out there and they understand the needs at this point. It's not, I mean, it's possible, sure. I mean, we can do it, but, or they, or we can just wait and have it at the May and keep our fingers crossed that it's fixed by September.
Well, also, I know that when there's a large item like that, the companies do something very similar to when we're considering buying a bus. Because we don't wait until May and just order a bus because there's quite a waitlist for that as well. We issue a letter of intent and we're not held to that purchase if the voters do not approve it. But they can get the ball rolling with our letter of intent that should the referendum, should the voters approve the purchase, we're going to buy from you and we're going to buy what we said we're going to buy. But if it's voted down, then there's no, there's nothing that can bind us for that.
And then, we would also have to get somebody at state ed at the point that they understand what we're trying to do, so it can kind of roll as quickly as we can if there's voter
So, it sounds like we're waiting. We're waiting to do some sort of referendum in May.
For the bleachers.
For the bleachers, the bathrooms, the windows, and potentially other stuff, or not, right? But at least those items.
And then we'll come with some more information regarding debt and all the other things that correspond with it at the meeting in December.
So, I can open it up for a public comment considering this is technically a public hearing on the topic of releasing repair reserve money, but we've just decided not to. So, does anybody have any comments? Okay, good.
So, that's a no to the sills.
That's a no to the sills at this time.
And I think that's a wise move because there was further investigation that needed to be done in addition to a schematic design that has to be drawn up to figure out if it could solve the water problem, so.
And if we get different information between now and May, and we need to do this again to, you know, we'll do it.
That's what I was going to say, do we have the opportunity in between? Because then maybe we don't have to wait for the water to continue to come in, just open it up just for the sills.
I'd like to see the items that we're considering. I'd like to see us look at it more in like a menu of items, that what would it mean to just get the sills and then the emergency windows, everything priced out separately? Because if we decide that the windows are structurally sound, only they're old and we're not getting ventilation, is that worth whatever price tag they're going to put on it? So, if we see all these things separately, you can choose what are the items that are of importance.
Okay, thanks, guys. Continuing on with Dr. Bowers' report.
Okay, so today we had, as I think most of our community knows, we had our superintendent's conference day. And the topic today was really to begin the training for our learner profiles. And Dr. Paul Yellen from the Yellen Center for Mind, Brain, and Education came, and he started giving us an initial training on the topics that would be included in the learner profiles. And we are going to be using, this is for the tier one profiles. We're going to have a tier one, two, and three. Tier one is going to be for the regular education students in grades four, seven, and nine. And our faculty was taught about the neurodevelopmental constructs that will be part, that are part of learning and will be part of the profile. We asked our faculty to take the sketch tool that our students would take so they could kind of see who they were as learners. And we talked a lot about how it would, this shift is, or would shift the thinking of our school community from what has traditionally been a deficit-based kind of situation. And in schools, we tend to look at what the student doesn't do right. And what we're trying to do, and this is to actually shift the thinking into a strengths-based thinking strategy. And we would share with students what their strengths are. We would talk about the deficits that they have and how they could bypass their weaknesses with their strengths. And we will be working with students this year and teaching courses in the second semester to talk about what the constructs are and how they can empower themselves to use strategies to get around the deficits and strengthen their strengths. And John, can I put you on the spot? Would you want to share anything about today's meeting from the teacher's perspective?
Sure.
Would you mind coming up to the microphone so people can hear? And when Andrea's here, I do this to her all the time, so I apologize. You got the short straw tonight.
Good evening, I'm John Shapice. I teach Spanish and French, middle school, high school here at Haldane. So, today, we, at our superintendent conference day, we did listen to Dr. Yellen, who gave us a chance to understand this different, this shift, as Dr. Bowers was pointing out, between what does a child do wrong versus what do they do right? And then how do we work with their strengths to help them improve upon what is difficult for them and make sure that they don't devalue what it is that they do really well? He gave the example of, you know, a student often who finds something easy will say, oh, that's, that's easy, that doesn't take any effort at all, even though for someone who can't do it, it is a big deal. So, they tend to devalue their strength and they focus on what they need to improve upon. So, we learn, we're learning how to shift that a little bit, which was very fascinating. Is there anything else you want me to discuss about that?
No, just your opinion about the day.
It was, it was a very, it was time well spent. I really did walk away from our session today with a lot of different ideas. And we'll see where things go from there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for doing that.
I think we talked about actually sharing the schematic with the board.
Yes.
I'd love that opportunity.
So, we, and actually, we're also talking about doing the sketch tool with the board, and also we're going to invite parents. And Dr. Yellen, we're probably going to offer a parent evening where they can do the sketch tool themselves and they can learn about the construct. So, yes, that's planned, and we're going to be, once we, now that we've gotten past this, we're going to be looking at next steps. And this is kind of an interesting process because there's, there's nothing to gauge our success with the process against, because from what we're understanding, this really hasn't been done before in this way by a school district. And in some situations, the teachers have been trained about the profiles and understand the profiles with their students. But we're actually going to be handing the baton over to the students. And it's, so that's the difference, where they're going to be empowered, they're going to understand, and we're going to kind of watch this roll out. We imagine it's probably going to be a two-year cycle where we go from the tier ones to the tier twos and the tier threes of the different types of profiles. The tier three will be more like what we do now with the CSE. And the tier two will be what we're doing now with RTI and the Child Study Team. So, we're going to take our time to make sure that we infuse best practice in the right ways with the first and then move to the second and to the third. But the parents will be brought into this. And yes, I know you do want the sketch tool, so we will do that whenever you want to do it, so.
Yeah, I said maybe even at a retreat topic or something.
In January, or even when it's rolled out with the parents.
Yep, yep.
It's exciting.
Okay, so that was our conference day today. We have a couple of other meetings that we'd like people to be aware of. The safety committee meeting, which was originally scheduled for the 7th of November, is now going to be postponed to the following week, I believe, I'm not seeing.
It says it hasn't been confirmed yet.
I guess it hasn't been. But we will be in Washington DC, accepting our Blue Ribbon Award on the 6th, 7th, and 8th of November. And so, we're looking forward to that, but we did have to postpone. The community leaders meeting, our first community leaders meeting of the year, will be on Tuesday, November 15th, prior to our Board of Education meeting. It's going to be in the Home Ec Room next door, G3. And everybody is invited who would like to come and learn about what we're doing and attend. So, it'll be at 6 o'clock in the Home Ec Room. And we also have another meeting scheduled for the Building and Grounds Committee, which will be talking about what we just talked about and what we're going to be presenting in December. And it will be in Mabel Merritt at 3:30 on the 17th, if you have an interest in that. As I just said, we are going to be leaving Sunday. There will be a team of four of us going down to Washington DC on Sunday. We'll be back late Tuesday evening. And we will have with us our plaque and our flag for being a Blue Ribbon School. We are anticipating that we are going to be inviting the community in for a celebration on the 29th of November, and you'll hear more about that as time gets close. And if you would like to, we had, we accepted the Board of Education's goals over the last couple of weeks, and I have finalized my superintendent's goals, which are on the website if anybody has an interest in seeing how my goals correspond with the Board of Education's.
I'd like to really encourage everybody to read those goals. And it's actually, it was so interesting, I liked how you put, you know, the board goals and then your goals. Because really, they're the school district's goals, and it's so great, you know, the way you wrote them out was so clear, I felt like, about where we're going and all that we're doing. And yes, you're spearheading it, and yes, the board's goals are our goals, but really, it's the school's goals. And I think that it's a great read for parents, students, teachers, to see, you know, what we understand as the direction of the school for this year and beyond. So, yeah.
Well, I also, I wanted to, I really appreciated that Diana put the link to the learner's sketch tool. It's so funny because I remembered that I had read this and I couldn't remember where. Now, I'm looking at Diana's goals again, and I see that's where it is. But I, it's nice that that's there.
Okay, good. Before I go into committee minutes, I wanted to also mention in my opening comments, which I forgot to do, that right now, the Nelsonville, Village of Nelsonville is having a public hearing about the subdivision for the James Pond property. I know that this seems like it's been going on forever, but the James Pond property has been sold as long as they get their subdivision approval. That's pretty much what we're waiting for. So, that's expected to go smoothly this evening. So, we are hoping to be able to wrap that up soon.
And just a reminder that part of that subdivision allows the district to retain the ownership of James Pond and the classroom out there. And I was actually, I did an observation yesterday of a co-teaching group in our earth science class, and the focus of their lesson was to look at topograph, the topographic map of the land that we're selling, to go out and to match the topography to the topographic map and determine where they would place the houses if they were going to be the builders and the recommendations that they would make to the people that are buying it. So, it was interesting to hear the kids, and they were asking about zoning laws, and they were asking about the requirements for the land, and they were asking about wetlands and, you know, questions that normally wouldn't come up unless they were in this kind of project-based experience. And it was, it was a fun day, beautiful weather out there, and the kids went out and really got to put the maps, and they understand the correlation between the maps and the land.
And it's a good reminder of how long things take as we were just talking about the buildings and grounds stuff and how, oh, maybe next summer, maybe the next summer. I mean, the selling of this land was conceived in 2006, is that correct? So, maybe 10 years later, it will actually be done, right? So, things, things move slowly. Okay, committee minutes, the safety minutes are here from September 26th. For anybody to read, any communication from the public? Going into consent agenda minutes, may I have a motion, please?
Motion.
We're discussing the minutes of the Board of Ed meeting held on October 18th. Any comments? All those in favor? Aye. Consent agenda, financial, may I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion, questions?
I just had one more quick question. On the Let's Talk, is that subscription-based or is it just a one-time purchase?
No, it's subscription-based.
It is subscription.
It is also, and I know that you were asking about the cost, it also drives BOSI's aid. So, it's, we will get a third of that back the following year. And, you know, it's a pilot to see how it goes. And Margaret actually sent me a Let's Talk message today, so to see how it worked. And so, we've had a couple that have come in, and it was nice to see that one of, what was sent to me was labeled complement, so it was nice.
So, the cost is $4,100 per year, and then we get a third of that back?
Yeah, and I'm not sure, because this is the first year, I'm not sure that it's as expensive as it is this year because the setup costs were there, but it is a subscription for an annual cost.
And that's on the list of things there were, Dr. Bowers and I were talking about, you know, how can we see what initiatives are working? And there's got to be ways to see it with some of it, right? Like, some of it's intangible, but some of it is tangible. Like, how many people use Let's Talk? And that's actually something we can look at at the end of the year. How many people, you know, go to this link on the school website? You know, we can see that kind of stuff. And I've asked, we're waiting to see from Leah, you know, how can we track how many people go to Board Docs? You know, because if they're going through the website, can they track how many times they click through the website to Board Docs? Or no, because it's going to an outside site? Can Board Docs track it? So, we're trying to figure that out because we do want to be able to say X works, Y doesn't work, Z maybe works, and see where we should be putting our money. Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Consent agenda personnel, may I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Second.
Any questions? Dr. Bowers, can you just explain the MOA between the, is that public? Is that not public? It's on my content? About the assistant coach for the girls and boys varsity soccer situation?
Sure. We had originally anticipated hiring both a varsity and a junior varsity coach for soccer. And the numbers for the soccer numbers were low enough that we did not feel we could have two teams that would be fielded. So, the recommendation was to put them on varsity and then hire assistant coaches to help with the larger numbers. So, the memorandum of understanding is to determine really how we're going to do this for a year. And instead of appointing a varsity and a junior varsity coach, we're, we've appointed a varsity and an assistant coach. And because the assistant coach was not in the contract, we had to negotiate a salary for the coach, which was placed in.
Do we have to rescind their position? I think we appointed them.
Yep, yes, we do. And if it hasn't been done, I have to, it doesn't look like it has. We will rescind, yep.
The only other question I have here is about the technology coordinators. How would that work throughout the day? For the .5, I could see that. So, is this more of like a morning and afternoon?
Yeah, we were talking about, we interviewed the candidates that had an interest in it, and it would be, it's a sixth-period assignment so that they would get paid. And they would either choose to do it on a prep period, or most of them were talking about doing it after school. And so, we're going to be looking at that and making the determination based on the person and what their needs would be. And just a reminder that we did get the bullet aid from the state, which is how we're going to be paying for these positions when they start.
But the bullet aid is a one-time aid. So, moving forward, we will have to consider... So moving forward, we will have to consider if it's how to fund it.
Yep.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Going into policy reviews. So we have our non-resident students' proposed amendment. This was just the adjustment, we had approved almost all of them last meeting. There was an adjustment that Margaret had asked for, just being super clear that the foreign exchange students need to reside with the families who live in Halden. And I think that's been pretty clearly put in there. Any questions about that policy?
It's interesting, when Margaret recommended that, I sort of wondered if it was necessary. But what we've retracted from the policy did make that clear. So I actually think that's, I do think it's an important addition. So I'm glad it's there.
Yep. Okay, so I think we'll approve, is everybody ready to approve that one?
Yeah.
So why don't we go ahead and do that, and then we can discuss the head lice situation?
Okay, so the recommended action is that the Board of Education approve the amendments of Policy 7130, non-resident tuition.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. So now we're moving into the head lice policy. So this is our first reading. And when I was reading it, I was thinking, wow, there's almost nothing here. I wanted so much more. What happens if, so if the child is determined to have head lice at 9:00 AM, do they get sent home? And we're saying, no, they don't get sent home. They can continue on for the rest of their day and as normal. And then this policy also says that the kids can come back the next day, nobody has to stay home, nobody has to get checked. They just, I don't know what, they're just being told that they have it.
Right.
And then it's being left up to the family's devices about how they're going to handle it.
And the district recommends to the family that if there are live lice, that they do have, they have to be treated before they come back. The reason why this was such a long discussion, when it actually came up in the Safety Committee meeting, is because the CDC has some new guidance out on how we should be handling lice. And in a situation, in the prior years, they would be sent home as soon as we knew that there was either nits or lice. And so now it's changed. We're halfway in between the recommendations of the CDC and where we were. But the CDC, it is guidance, they are not laws. And I think people were thinking there were specific laws related to it. It isn't, it's guidance. And so we had, we looked around in the region to find out what people were doing. And I would say, for the most part, if there are live bugs, then the child is sent home. And if they're nits, they can remain.
They what?
They can remain in the building.
That's not what the policy says.
It doesn't say.
Oh, that may be. It doesn't say that at all. It says that they can stay, whether they have lice or they have nits.
That may, I think that's the wrong policy. I think we need to table that, because that's not the one that was, should be on there.
And it also says that they're informed by the school nurse of their condition and advised to begin treatment. It doesn't say that they have to do treatment.
Well, then, no, that's not, we had a different one that should be there. Somehow, the wrong one got there. That probably came from Erie Boses. But there is a different one. So let's pull that off as the first read, and we're going to put back the one that was written.
Okay.
So I'm good. So thank you for catching that.
Wait, so I just have, so I have a question. Oh, so, yeah, because the policy that's on Board Docs and the regulations that are only available, that's the board content, right, are saying that a child can stay home through, sorry, may stay at school throughout the day, with the teacher making these efforts to reduce the contact. But that's not, that's not what you're intending to have us read?
Well, no, they won't be sent home unless...
Why do you see that, Peggy? The word does it say that they'll have?
I'm reading what's in the executive content.
I wonder if the...
The head lice regulations, there's the policy and there's the regulations.
Okay.
That's the one.
So, and the regulations should be mirroring the policy, but I think we got the right regulations and the wrong policy.
I didn't even see the regulations, I was just looking at the policy.
Okay, so that's...
No, I think they actually do match.
No, they don't, because the policy doesn't ask that the teacher keeps less contact, doesn't, the policy seems to be like, who cares?
Yeah, no, and that is, and the who cares is from the CDC. So, yes, so I think that we got the right regulation, wrong policy.
Okay. So then, let's just, shall we then just push this forward, okay? Because then we can all actually look at the appropriate.
May I say one thing about this?
Yes.
I so appreciate that the board is actually paying attention to what the recommendations are from the CDC and the American Academy of Pediatrics. I just, I think that's very important. It's not what the policy has been in the past. And I just think, I appreciate that. And I understand, from what Dr. Bowers said, of a sort of being in the middle between what the CDC is saying and what's currently happening. And I think that compromise is appropriate. But I do really appreciate that we're actually talking about what is being recommended by these organizations that have thought a lot about this. And the emphasis on trying to get kids back into the classroom as quickly as possible, that's where they belong. So, anyway, thanks.
Okay, good. So moving that forward. Any communication from the public?
Curiosity question?
Please.
My question actually pertains to the approval of the personnel, that Jessica Perone has been approved to take the part-time, the half-time special ed elementary position. Is the district going to start interviewing, have they started interviewing her replacement as the library media specialist in the middle school, high school library?
For the halftime. She will be halftime in both. And so now we have a halftime position open, and yes, it's already begun.
The interview process has begun.
Yes. And we actually may have a candidate, but we're not at the point that we can finalize that yet. But yes, you're right, we're going to have 1.0 full-time equivalents in the library, and so we'll have two halftime people.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, going into the CSE/CPSA recommendations. Ms. Famulara.
The recommended action is that the Board of Education approves the recommendations by the Committee on Special Education and preschool special education, as indicated.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. So this is getting brought up today, just because we, this is usually kind of a retreat item, but because this was brought up in the past couple of days, I thought we should bring it up and talk about it as a group. So traditionally, what has occurred is that when there's any sort of correspondence with the board, whether it's a phone call, or a letter, or an email, the board president is the one who's charged with being the spokesperson. And that's for a variety of reasons. One, it really just keeps things organized, right? Because we don't want everybody responding with different responses potentially, or in a different time. And two, it helps to really have a cohesive voice for the board. And part of the, when we go through the process of appointing or electing a president, I think that that's something that we all consider. Like, okay, well, this person's going to be the spokesperson for the board, so let's make sure that we trust that person's judgment. And of course, the president is not, it would not be appropriate for the president to make sort of sweeping statements for the board, they are just one person. But to, you know, respond kind of benignly, respectfully, thank you for your information, or whatever, and usher a direction would be appropriate. So that's always kind of been how we've operated, and it's been part of the culture. So I wanted to make sure that everybody was okay with that continuing to be part of the culture, and also recognizing, like we were talking about earlier in the meeting, was that if things aren't in policy, they can get gray, right? So I asked Linda to pull up the policy, the duties of the president of the Board of Education. And, you know, it doesn't say anywhere there that, it says executes documents on behalf of the board, which could be interpreted as being the spokesperson. But I was thinking that perhaps we could include, if we felt like we wanted to, is the public spokesperson for the board? So that's what I'm bringing up.
We don't get into details, but was there, did we get off track on this?
Yeah, well, there was an email that was sent to the board, and another board member responded to the email. And it just kind of, you know, can create issues.
Can I just say something? That other board member would be myself, so I'm just going to make it very clear. My thing is, we all have opinions, and I appreciate the fact that you'd like to be the spokesperson, but I also would like to know that everybody's opinion will be accounted for, which it sounds like it will. And that's the importance of a board. We're all going to have different opinions, we're all going to have different ways we think things should be handled. And having one voice is great, but we need to consider everyone's opinion.
So are you suggesting that the board president should poll the entire board about how to respond to an email? Before responding?
Since it was addressed to the entire board, probably.
Ooh. Okay, how do you guys feel about that?
I don't think so. Because generally, the response, maybe copy the board.
Of course.
Okay? Because generally, the response is a response that, like a response, just saying something that was already said at a board meeting, okay? So like, if someone asked about the referendum, she got an email about the referendum, she would say, oh, well, we're going to talk about this in December, okay? And we're looking at all options, okay? Because clearly, that's what we discussed. Or she would direct it to the superintendent. She wouldn't, I don't think that, she would just give an outstatement that just came out of the blue, okay? And I'm saying she, I should say the president, okay? Because it's been multiple times. That's been generally the responses, that we just give an answer, if it's just a straight answer, direct them to a superintendent, invite them to come to a meeting and speak publicly, and so forth.
So what if these were topics that I introduced?
Okay. But now, well, with that being said, then, well, she can, the president could either then direct it to, so let's say, first of all, if the person wanted to get a specific board member's opinion, if they emailed us directly, then of course, we can, if someone emails me, okay, I can respond, okay? Or you, or so forth. So I don't think, I don't have any problem with that, okay? I think if there was a situation where there was an email, I'm trying to even find the email, I don't know if I even, if I even got it. Was this sent over, can you give me the date of the email?
It was Sunday. I'll maybe look at, maybe your email might not have been accurate.
So, you know, maybe in that situation, if it's something that you want to respond to, then contact the president and say, you know what? Can I, do you mind if I respond to this email? Because I'd like to just say this, this, and this. So I think it's just because, we don't get a lot of emails, which is surprising, you would think we would get a lot more emails. But for every time there's an email, you know, the fact that the president has to respond to the email in the first place is a burden, and then to top that off, to email out the response to four people and wait for four responses, and then if all four responses aren't, okay, good with me, then, you know what I mean?
So we're just saying that the judgment of the president, whether we agree or disagree?
No, no.
Well, no, I'm sorry. I think, well, first of all, we elect the president every year. So if the president was going off on a tantrum every time we got an email, then the board shouldn't reelect that person to president next year. Or the board should call an executive meeting, or have an open discussion, whatever the proper protocol would be, to say, I think we need to discuss about how we respond on email. So that's it. I mean, I'm glad I don't even have the email, because I don't even know what we're talking about.
I just sent it to you, you were on it.
I'm talking, on what, on Sunday? I'll look for it in a second. So, I don't know, I think that's just, to me, that would be it, because if, I think that's the perfect example. Like, if we all just, what would happen if four of us responded and gave, you know, four different answers? We would look, I mean, that would be kind of silly. So that's my thought.
Yeah, and when I'm saying that the board president, you know, that we, there's one person responding, so there's one voice, I'm not saying that that means that that voice, that everybody has to agree, because that, the response to an email is going to be somehow policy-inducing. It's just a way to usher the conversation, so a thank you for the email, or whatever is said. The board president's job is not to soapbox on an email without the rest of the board's approval. But if the board president needs to get everybody's opinion before directing an email, that sounds like a lot of unnecessary back and forth.
Can I just make two comments at some point? And it's a little weird, because that's so far away, and I have this little picture of you all, but when it's appropriate.
Yeah, go, yeah.
Yeah. So there's two things that come to mind. The first is, like, one of the things that I remember learning, I guess the first thing I want to say, I don't even remotely think this is about people not having their own opinions, right? I think that's critically important, that we do all have different opinions. And, I mean, I think there have been things that we have, you know, not all agreed about, and I think that's fine. So one of the first things I remember learning at the board training when I became a trustee is that, as an individual, none of us have any power. Like, none of us have any, we're only the board as a unit. And so, in a sense, that, to me, that in a sense sort of suggests that maybe even as much as we really want to, we might want to refrain, it might not be appropriate, I guess, for us to reply to an individual email. The other thing, right, so, the other thing is that when somebody replies to a comment like that, and it replies to all, there's the potential, I think, for actually violating the open meetings rules, because in a sense, we're beginning to engage in conversation about policy or district issues, outside of a public meeting, which I think is problematic. So it's not about, to me, it's not about people agreeing or disagreeing, or only one perspective being presented, it's sort of what we are as a board, right? As a board, we're, it's only us as a unit. And so my perception of, a memory of how Jen Atleast has handled this since I've been on the board, is actually always kind of to direct the person back to the meeting, back to what we've done as a group. And I think that's, and I think that's what's, that's what's important, so that, yeah. So two things are happening, that... So two things are happening, that we're recognizing that we are who we are as a group. None of us has any power that's, when we're not a group. And the second thing of making sure that we're always following the open meetings laws. So to me, those are the issues, not like whose opinion is being expressed or not being expressed. And so to get to Jen's point about this being a policy, if we were to identify this as like a practice that the board wanted to embrace, and we probably would need to, you know, obviously, we'd have to change the policy and do the readings, et cetera. But it seems like part of that would be always bringing, directing the individual back to, you know, back to the unit. And I don't know how you would do that. I don't know how other policies handle that kind of thing. So anyway, that was a lot that I had to...
No, I think that's... I mean, I agree with you.
I think we're aboard when we're meeting.
To me, it's really not about, like, one person's opinion, like, really not, like, taking precedence. It's about referring everybody back to the unit.
Yes.
And I was told that this was the policy, so that's when I questioned the policy. So that's why we're here discussing policy.
And everybody appreciates that, right? I mean, and so I think what you're... You know, I think, I don't think anybody doesn't value that we're now turning this into a policy, right? So I think... And it actually gets to this whole issue of, like, what's policy, what's not a po... You know, that Jen brought up, that what, you know, what's actual formal policy, you know? I think it's important. I mean, Laura, I think you really heard something that, you know, had been expressed numerous times in the community. It's certainly something not, I had heard not just about concussions, but sort of injuries in general. And everybody really, everybody appreciates that. But the fact remains that we did it as the board.
Yeah, and Laura's right. I said, "Well, it's board policy that the president is the spokesperson." And it's not policy, but it certainly is practice.
Right. And that's where...
And that is exactly what we were talking about earlier, with the concussion thing.
And that's exactly what I stated in my email, right? So when there's no policy, there's confusion, and so that's why we need to get on board.
So would you like me to ask Erie Bosse's to send their recommendation of a policy and what they have? And that's one of the reasons why we're looking at our policy manual, because we are not up to date in a lot of areas that we should be. And I'll be happy to touch base with Erie Bosse's to see what they have.
As far as for policy for the...
Communication with the public, board communication with the public.
I mean, yeah, but... So, but like, what are we saying? Like, what are we... Are we actually, like, where are we? Are we saying that any of us should be able to respond to any email that's sent to the board? Because I'm, I did find the email. Like, this person wasn't even looking for a response in the first place.
That's right. That's exactly right.
So, like, I don't even know if anyone should have responded. I mean, it's not a...
There was no question asked to the board at all in that email. So it is not the board's job, in my opinion, to respond, answering questions. Because they weren't there.
She wasn't, you know... First of all, this should have been in the agenda, because we usually put, we usually put correspondence in the agenda. So we should have put this...
You know what? It didn't go to Julia, that's why.
I don't know anything about this communication.
Okay.
It wasn't sent to Bo or BOE, whatever.
Oh, it wasn't? It was sent to us individually? I see, I'm not even noticing that. Oh, I see what you're saying.
May I just mention that if it is sent to the board BOE, an automatic reply goes out that says this would be included in the agenda? If it was sent to all five of you and doesn't come to me, that automatic reply is not generated. But it seems to me that it serves the same purpose. If you send an email to each individual member of the board, it's the same thing as sending it to the board.
Agreed.
Yeah.
Agreed.
Yeah.
Oh, so, right. I didn't even notice, right?
I didn't even notice that either.
Okay.
So, yeah, I mean, you know, there's lots of things, I think, about this board that relies on, like, oral tradition of how things are done and why they're done, and, "Oh, that's just because the way we use, we've always done it." That happens a lot. So finding ways to codify what we do, I think, is a great idea. It has been practiced that there's one person who responds to these types of correspondence. So we, as a board, can decide if that's not what we want to do, although I would strongly advocate for continuing it to be one person responding. But if, as a board, that's not what we want to do, then we can decide that. Diana, do you mind if I put you on the spot, and you can just share with us what Garrison does? Do you mind?
I don't mind. You know, again, I'm speaking. I don't have the whole board with me. But we have, our president does speak usually for us. And, you know, we've been told in, you know, over the years, you have to be careful, because people will get you at the soccer field, and they'll get you at the football field, and they'll get you at the cocktail party, and you have to keep kicking it back, kicking it back to Dr. Bowers, and, you know, or you to put it where it should be.
And you each voice your opinions, though?
We voice our opinions at the board meeting, yeah. I mean, we all have our opinions, as parents and community members and things like that, but we are supposed to be... She said it very well, Peggy, that we're supposed to be a unit. We're supposed to be... You know, I think one of the things in training, they say that if three of you go one way and the other ones go another way, the board still has to come together on the final decision as the board.
Absolutely.
But you need one voice. You can't have everybody kind of going, you know...
So it might be a good practice that if there's a email that comes in, that anybody that is not the president feels strongly about, like, "Hey, hey, I know this person. Hey, I was just talking to this person about something. Hey, I've got a whole list of things I want to say to this person," whatever, that communication is to the board president as soon as possible. And then there can be a conversation about, should, you know, do we want to change how we're going to respond, or do you want to have some input on how I'm going to respond, et cetera? And for the good or the bad, I mean, I, you know, my response, personally, my response is always going to be pretty benign. It's not going to be in any way a personal opinion so much as it's going to be a benign ushering into a different conversation at a more appropriate time. But if anybody has an opinion on something else happening, then they should, you know, just let me know. So how are we feeling? Laura, how are you feeling? Do you feel...
I have no problem for you... Yeah, absolutely, to respond. I just feel that we all need to have input, and it can't be conversation outside of the board.
What do you mean? Have input, it can't be conversation?
What I'm saying is to consider all of our opinions and come to us first.
So are you saying that you don't want me to benignly respond to emails? You want me to get your opinion before I do that?
Hmm.
Do you think something else is happening? So what I hear in your quest, in your response, Laura, is that you think that that... I mean, the only thing I can take from what you're saying is that you think maybe that's not happening.
Do you feel like that's not happening?
Oh, no. I just, in the email, I'm just going to, I'm going to have to publicly say it. I heard that you and Dr. Bowers were preparing a response. And in my opinion, we're the board. So if you were preparing the response with Dr. Bowers, we should have also been notified at the same time, I guess, maybe?
Okay, so maybe I wasn't cleared. My conversation with Dr. Bowers was, "Hey, did you get that email?"
Oh, okay.
"I'm going to respond later."
Okay.
"And this is how I'm going to do it."
Okay. Because it just said "strategized," and I'm like, "Oh, okay, so there was a strategy to respond, but we weren't included." And I'm thinking, "Okay." That was how I read it, so I apologize if I misinterpreted.
You know, I was just strategizing about the response, because the response itself, the email itself, was not in any way an email that asked the board any questions. It was not, it was an email that said, "Heads up. This is my letter." So I was just saying to Dr. Bowers, "I feel like there's a lot I want to say to this, but she's not asking us."
Right.
So I'm just going to respond, you know, kind of benignly, and say thank you, and usher it in the direction. And Dr. Bowers was like, "Yeah." I mean, she didn't, she didn't ask, and if she wanted to ask, she would have. So that was the conversation that I had. And so it was...
So I apologize. Like I said, the email to me was that you had already strategized, and I was not sure what that meant.
Okay.
It was a benign conversation.
Okay.
See, because that, this, that email was like a gray area, because we've always said, like, that we shouldn't, and I've said this for years, I go back with, I remember when with Jillian back and forth on this, because she didn't agree with it, she felt the other way, that we shouldn't respond to letters to the editors, things in papers, like, we have a system, if people want to communicate with us, they can come to a meeting, they can send us an email, and then we respond to that. But this was like a gray area, because she just sent us a copy of an editorial. So not asking for a response, or can I have a meet, you know, so it was kind of a gray... Yeah, she did email us, but the email didn't say, it was just, "Hey, this is what I'm going to be sending to the PCNR."
So it was a topic that I brought up. So I felt the need to explain, and I think I was very polite, and she was very appreciative, I will say. And I learned a lot more that maybe someday we can all share, but we'll leave it at that.
So it said, like, you had some subsequent conversation with her about this issue.
And I forwarded to Jen and Dr. Bowers.
Yeah, yeah. No, that's fine. I mean, one of the things I would say about this, I mean, when I saw Candy's letter, like, it made a lot of sense to me that she would want the public to know that on her watch, she was paying attention to this, right? I mean, that's how I interpreted... I mean, that's my personal interpretation of why her letter, and I think her letter to the editor is important. I mean, she's a member of this community. She's like, you know, she was, you know, nurse to, you know, school nurse to, you know, many of our children for many, many years. I mean, she, she's a person that, you know, we, the district really entrusted the care of our children to for, you know, a long time. And it does, it makes a lot of sense to me that she would have wanted this letter to know. And I actually appreciated, even though she wasn't asking for a response, I appreciated that she gave us a heads up. I mean, this concussion, not concussion issue, but the issue of healthy student athletes is one that's really important to the community, it's really important to us, and, yeah. I mean, that's how I had interpreted it. And I really appreciate that, you know, that it's been brought to the forefront as
Okay, so where are we?
Diana's going to get some policies, and we're going to look at them.
But I think we should just, I mean, if we want to have a, make this a retreat item or something, discuss it in further, but I think right now, we have an unwritten policy, or understanding is a better word, as a board, that the president responds to board correspondence. And then, you know, and then just leave it, leave it at that until further. If we want to say, you know what, we need to have a little mini retreat on this item, you know, as soon as possible, then let's do that.
I think Diana said she would try and get some, whatever other Erie...
Yep. I'll get recommendations.
Sure. I mean, I don't have a problem with just the board. That's not the point here. That wasn't the point at all.
No, and I don't think it was, and so I think...
So that's not my concern. I think it'd be great if you responded. I just, I guess, took out a context what the words meant. And sometimes that happens in email. And then you get all caught back up in it.
Okay, so until further notice, I will be responding on behalf of the board to board emails, copying the full board on my response. Yes? Good?
Yep.
Good kidding. Any further conversation about this or other items? Okay, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Motion?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.